...here today.
The time is gonna be up.
No.
What's going to be?
Basically training.
So he's gonna try to come back at least.
Anyway, I just thought I would ask you.
He's a problem.
Does he take the test for all of you there?
No, he thought he was going to, but it's gonna be.
It'll be fine.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
All right, well, it looks like we have a video feed, so we're gonna go ahead and start. We have a work session preceding the regular scheduled session, our regular session. So, Wally, would you like to kick off our work session today?
Sure, I've brought some materials and also will do a photometric light demonstration tonight as well. But there was a lot of concern or actually curiosity as to what a photometric plan looks like. So if y'all want to adjourn to the front of the table, I could sort of guide you through that.
Thank you.
Want us to gather in the front, come around?
Yeah, it'll be better, it'll be better here. Yeah, I tried to put this in PowerPoint, but no matter what, yeah, it was basically like. This is Legacy, Phase Two, the new plan. We're down inside here. We got the little, whatever. Of course, all property. But, you know, the primary area that was a concern for me when I first reviewed this plan was down on this area. Because you'll see that the streetlights are, you know, probably as close to the joint property as get. I actually, I mean, that's how our designs are, I mean, I actually looked at, they've got these little marks here. I actually looked at that as a mark on the O, but actually, if you look a little closer, it says zero point one. So they're okay.
Oh, is that that candlestick? That, oh, right.
Right, yeah, it would be York County, but, but, yeah, hey, still people, right?
Your candle, love it.
I didn't mean that, the way it's not a little down, also, you know, moves so much light. Correct. Over here has to be correct. What we had on the books during the time, this, this something I, you know, I've had cooperation with the developer. Is that we have a provision for something called hazard lighting.
Kind of in the eyes of the holder, but I have been having them, and did the same thing. Photometric plans with the point five still. Now, of course, this is the whole development that's included in here, but what I really wanted to skip to was the lighting. That's the last page. Would be the lighting details. And lighting details, you'll notice that the, the bulb is assessed into that top area there. Directly shielded, it will go down, it will not. We allow up to thirty feet, to their credit, their top elevation or height is fourteen feet. So, and this is just basically where they tell us which lights are going where. They happen to pay a lot of money to the meeting for their lights, but, but anyway. They are definitely go with the more upscale, but it does meet the, the idea of directly.
So, Wally, may I ask, if we look on that cover page, or that first page, this is that grid that you alluded to in the change. So this is, is it the ten foot by ten?
It's ten foot by ten foot, although here, if you look at the one to one hundred scale, I believe. Yeah, that's about right.
About, okay. I, I didn't realize that that would have the actual candle on that. That's very helpful.
It does, right. And you'll notice that the foot candles off the streetlights in this case, they actually go down fairly quickly.
They do, because they're down.
Right, right. And that's that whole idea. Which, you know, we can.
What was the term light pollution?
Light pollution refers to an area, I don't know if you've ever seen those space shots of like. You see a bunch of lights wherever they're sitting, and I've seen them in airplanes, particularly on rainy nights, you know. That's, that's really what.
More of the lights going.
Right. I mean, although, you know, to be, to be clear, even with this direction. You're gonna be able to see this on the ground, but there's gonna be light reflected off the ground. And I don't know if y'all looked at that, that sort of technical stuff I gave you today, but we use the foot candles. Because foot candles are basically measure of light that's visible to the human eye. Lumens measure things like light that we can't see, it's outside of our visual spectrum. Does emit a type of light, we can't see it, but. I am, I am, and if everybody's getting up for this.
Grand finale.
Wally, when you do demonstrate.
Yes.
I'll talk into Mike.
I have to switch yours back, just in my.
Thank you. Um, I'll preface this in with the demonstration. So when myself and some fellow Kwanians were up all night cooking pork, we were in the municipal park, building parking lot. And we did not, I could not locate a light meter, but I downloaded an app on the phone. I, I know that's not as good as having a calibrated light meter, but, you know, just to get an idea.
Sure.
And one of the things that I found, and then upon further reading, verified it, is that you get a substantially different reading if you're holding it per, uh, horizontal versus on a vertical plane.
You will.
Yeah, so that, and looking at different ordinances in different municipalities, some of them differentiated between a horizontal and a vertical, just because a vertical was so much brighter. So if you are giving a demonstration, it would be really helpful to say, okay, here's the horizontal, here's the vertical.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll say this about the phone apps too. After I talk with you, Laura and I did a few experiments, and the phone app is, is not nearly as accurate as this is. So I just wanted to get that out. But, yeah, we'll, we'll do some vertical and horizontal, and if there's a preference to how we take those readings, then, you know, we can go from there. I'm gonna sort of talk through this, hopefully talk loud enough so everybody can hear me. Angie, I'm going to use your desk, because point here. Now, you'll notice right now when I turn this thing on, we should get zero lumens, which we are, and zero foot candles, which we. Light bleeding in there, but anyway. Okay, now, we are at, believe it or not, we're about thirty nine point two foot candles right here, basically with the lights on. Let me, oh, I gotta remember. Yeah, I was trying to get this for like a hero. Sure, that'd be great.
I'll be right back.
Ooh, it's about right, this is gonna come out too close.
I'm showing point three, for the record.
How does your phone app show it in your?
I'll just, I'll just talk at the, the mic. Uh, we're at point four here, we go down to point three. Buddy, I did it today and I came up with point five, but. Point two, you're pretty close.
I'm showing point two.
Yeah, you're very, you're very close.
Horizontal.
So does that give the most accurate reading?
Uh, from what I can see, so the foot candle, it all depends on how the light particles fall. And horizontally, it's generally a lower reading from what I read and from what I noticed. If I hold it horizontally, and here it might not make too much of a difference, but when I was near streetlights, I would get substantially higher reading on the vertical than the horizontal.
Four vertically, and.
Yeah. If I hold this, so if I hold this. It's hard, it's shielded, but if I held it maybe on this platform.
Hold it, let's, let's hold it above that platform.
And right now, you might be cast in a shadow, but if we put it right here.
Let me, you hold that, and let me get out of the way.
So right now, how Christine is holding it, it's point six, and then horizontal, point five, right here, yeah.
So there is a difference in there, and multiply over, you know, several iterations, it would probably be greater. I would think vertical would probably be the way to go anyway, you know, because, I mean, we sort of stand vertically too, so. But that's point five, which, point five is kind of halfway between, according to literature, between twilight, deep twilight. I don't, you know, that's in the eyes of a holder to me, but, but you're looking at about point, point four, point five, three, you're already here. So that's what we're talking about, the spill every day. Keep in mind, that's at the property line. You know, if you're in a house, you're gonna be further away from the property line, and, and the foot candle values are probably gonna be less. But anyway, that's why, that was my demonstration.
And when I was under the, the streetlights, um, the point, when we were measuring at the point five, just based on my uncalibrated phone, it seemed very, very, very bright, then, and with those particular streetlights, you would stand back about two more feet and it would drop significantly. You could definitely see the rings of light, so I thought that was a really interesting exercise.
That's what we like.
The, is that the actual tool that we'll use?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Emmett, I will say that I went out to the municipal park after we spoke, and ended up having quite a party out there. Bob Speechley was there, Buddy Green was there, and so we all played with the light meter and had a little bit of fun. I was standing under one of the streetlights, I guess it's the one closest to the, to the, the actual parks and rec building. But it was over the parking area, sort of across, if you can call it a street, I guess, Municipal Drive. And I got two point fives directly underneath it. But it went down significantly, significantly, once you went to the residential properties that are over there. When you got in there, it went down to like point two, so, just to kind of give you an idea.
Now, and when you were out there, when it did go down to point two, how bright did that seem to you at night?
Uh, it seemed very dark to me.
Thank you for that demonstration. Are there any questions, comments? That was very helpful, thank you. And I'll just, you know, I, I was really looking around in different ordinances and different municipalities and different professional societies. And of course, the Dark Sky Society and astronomers were like, no, 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 you need to have it much lower. But then a lot of the municipalities did have it.
Right. There are some that, that exceed point five, go a little bit lower than that, but I stayed with point five. Number one, because it's the first time we've really had a lighting ordinance. And number two, trying to balance out the, the idea of, of safety. You know, you need some light for safety, and you also need to, to cut down on the light pollution on to adjoining properties. So I tried to balance those. Now, that's not written in stone, the planning commission can obviously recommend something else.
Wally, can you speak to how that compares to our surrounding municipalities? If I missed that, the point five, like what does York do and Hampton and?
Well, I can tell you that I spent a lot of time, because it's very detailed, looking at the Falkirk County ordinance. I used to work in Falkirk County at one time, and they have a point five spill over. Now, I'm not exactly sure what York has, but, but I'd look at sort of a, a conglomeration of ordinances, just to kind of come up with that point five. It, it is, it is sort of, it's the most frequent number that you'll see probably for the spill every light.
So we're consistent with?
Oh, yes, yes, we're not, we're not.
County, they're point five also.
Okay, so we're all in the same.
Any other comments or, or questions that you'd like to see?
I'm about eleven P M. What, I'm trying to get into that, but.
Okay, that refers to stadium lighting, where we have stadium, we talked briefly about stadium lighting last time. And I thought it would be good to, again, that's from Falkirk's ordinance, but I thought it might be good to address the turnoff time. Now, obviously, if there's a football game that starts at eight, and let's say it's gone into some overtimes or whatever, obviously, you would keep the lights on as long as that event's going on, or, you know, reasonably. But otherwise, the lights would be off at eleven. Actually, they shouldn't be on at all if there's not an athletic event. If an athletic event is concluded, the lights need to go off by.
Lights on the, on those types of.
Yes, outdoor, outdoor recreative light. We're not talking about, you know, your backyard basketball court or anything, talking about like the middle, the, the, the middle school football field, I think.
Understand, thanks.
There are no other questions or, or any further discussion to be had? We can take a recess until seven P M. in the regular session? Or are we allowed, yeah?
Yeah, we're allowed to do that.
Yes, we will do that. All right, thank you so much, Wally.
Sure.
Wally?
Yes.
Could you tell me how many apartments will be in this new project next door? I have had so many people ask me that question, and I feel foolish that I don't know.
Well, there were two hundred apartment buildings approved. I think the actual number, and I wish I'd known you were gonna answer this question, I could've gotten the site plan specifically for you. If you can, that'd be good. I think it's about.
I have it in my office.
I think it's about a hundred and ninety-two.
I was gonna say, it's a, it should be over, I was gonna say a hundred and fifty.
You might be right.
I just feel like I should know the answer to that when people ask me.
Well, yeah, she's gonna get the, get the plans, she has them on her desk, she's still looking at E and S, aspects of it, so. I feel Legacy's kept us busy with that Phase One, Phase Two and Three, now the apartments, and.
I bet.
And actually, those guys are doing Darden, which some of you probably familiar with, they call it Bull Run Phase Two, but it's off of Darden, Darden Road. Which we worked really hard on them to, to get an exit off Dorothy, but compromise, so, yeah. Might be something to look at when we redo our other ordinances, but.
It was already zoned for residential, correct?
It was, yes, yes, sir. And they did a, what we call a planned open space development, so. You know, they, they lay aside basically fifty percent as open space, which in this case is.
Did you say fifty?
Feature, but.
Did you say fifty percent?
Fifty percent, yes. Well, I had a row with them about parking, and we finally rectified that.
Is that, are you the all the phases, do you have a layout?
This is all in the apartments, but I do have all the phases.
Okay. No, 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 just.
Does it say on the cover how many?
Uh, they have a parking.
No, it's on the back. I was gonna say. Hundred seventy-six.
Yeah, hundred seventy-six.
Hundred seventy-six, yeah. So it was right between Wally and. So this is Phase One, so this is kind of like a subset of Phase One. So here are, here are the different buildings, one to the clubhouse, here are the different buildings. Uh, this is a green space in the middle, this is obviously parking, pool, um, this is the. Right.
And it has been done before.
Uh, no, I know of. Yeah. No, I don't think we haven't been told anything about that. I think that would come at a later time, um, but. They haven't notified us, um, as of yet, that, Tom, that you'd be notified first, right? Yeah, so we haven't been notified.
Apartments or condominiums, are people?
So these are apartments, they're.
Someone's buying the building and renting out.
Franklin Johnson Company, they're gonna buy this, this scale, and they're going to.
Okay, so this apartment.
What you just said, they're buying what?
So, yeah, so currently, Big Woods, um, I need it, and I took those property. Another company is buying this particular parcel and building the apartment.
Like it is right now.
Yes, so this is an improved development, and they can deviate from it, um, we haven't had any minutes of it, but it's just a different builder, Bill Wilson. Um.
Franklin Johnson.
Hey, you may remember, well, you may remember that they came in, I don't know if they went before the planning commissioner.
I waited here when this was done.
They, they came in with some architects, who were.
We went around the road a few times on that, and I think we ended up getting that part.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was more leaning towards the scale of the.
So this is Phase One?
This is a subset of Phase One, it's a apartment.
So this is the only parcel that they're letting us sell today, so.
Uh, no, there's still the parcels they had. Uh, and then this is a, this is a small parcel of what's supposed to be commercial, but they're not going to develop it as of yet. Right here, that little sweep right there. Yeah, there's a little sweep, they made a mistake, and they're, they're gonna just cut it straight through. Um, but this is, this has been being commercial, um, and then.
And this has one in front of the A R V?
And this one actually not happening.
But then.
We did a lot of research on whether these are.
There's one, one. So we know it's there, so there's a lighting plan. So lighting plans are.
So Randy Thomas took the visit down to two pieces, we looked at all, you know, the examples.
I have a question, how many of the apartments are single, doubles?
Um, so I have thirty-six one bedrooms, I have a hundred and twenty-four two bedrooms, and I have sixteen three bedrooms.
How many apartments does that one have for you?
Yeah, which is the same, right?
The ratio of the apartment to the, the, the same on the last plan is because of laws on this, it's not.
And so these are, these are townhomes.
And this part of the negotiation, this parcel, this is parcel?
No, this is, no, this is, this is part of the. But I was pointing out, since I'm not noted here, because this is.
They are townhouses.
Yeah, so these are townhouses.
But will these be rentals, or will they be for sale?
Uh, that's up to.
These will be, these will be for sale, these are gonna be town.
They'll be for sale?
Yes.
These, these will be a part of, these are town.
And they go this way?
Yeah, so this is a.
Basically, all of this front.
Oh, this is a main room, I'm sorry.
So are they gonna face, do this draw, so are there garages underneath or anything?
Some of them work to see that, some of them work as part.
Well, there's nothing showing.
No, I would have to get a different, I'd have to get a different site plan. Because this is, this is.
Right, just for this, I, I get it.
So this is.
This is, this is.
This is big tree, right? So the apartments are the fourth, basically.
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Townhomes behind.
So when you go to victory right now, you, you'll see that big logging activity, that's the apartments right now. Um, so that's that, that's the, I'm sorry, that's the apartment, parcel. So between the two main entrances?
Yeah.
Right between them is the apartments.
Okay, and then it will stack behind it.
Yes.
And you said these will be facing victories or?
Well, those will be, they're, they're. But I think she was saying is.
The apartments are what you see from victories first, and then everything.
I knew what you were saying.
Yeah, and nobody's sure, bringing all kinds of stuff right through.
Yeah, so here.
I hear you laughing.
I'm just laughing, you're using the term that we've been talking about for months.
So, I mean, it was wooden before, they did have a twenty-five foot buffer, but, I mean, you know, it's, it's sparse. Um, so we may go back and ask them to kind of do additional plantings. There were a couple trees that got hit by machinery as well, which we'll ask them to replace, obviously. Sorry, I may need to ask this as well, so that part I can, I can answer.
Well, I was just thinking that's gonna be our main entrance coming in, it's in coastal, and then you see the back side.
Again, close to seven o'clock, just a couple minute more.
The way the design is made, the coloring is made.
This one.
Yes, that's why they, that's why Wally and Tom did a really strict, um, colors needed. To make sure the coloring and illumination.
It's really interesting, I learned all about.
It's cool.
Oh, we can, we can do tons and tons of teaching on that.
All right, we're gonna give it just a couple of minutes. Councilman Fei, you missed our, our demonstration of, of light meters and lighting.
But you'll see it again.
Yeah, yeah, it was very good. Couple of minutes.
I'm gonna elbow you. I'm gonna elbow you. We're both tops. It doesn't help that we're.
We're not eating.
Are you left-handed or right-handed? He writes left-handed, but my husband is an electrician, so he does everything. So, he does like screwdrivers and, um. Shoot, like he shoots.
That's, if you feel like you have.
Yeah, he throws, he pitches right. It, it makes no sense. I don't know, it's like, almost like a similar index.
Okay, I am calling that seven o'clock. Uh, so I'm going to call to order the PCOS and Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June twenty-third. Uh, join me if you will for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Lord's Prayer for an invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where worship stands, one nation, under God, in the name of our Lord and our Saviour.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Next item on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes, we have three sets dating back to February. Uh, can we approve those all at once, or do we need to split those up?
I was instructed they had to be split up.
Split up, okay, all right. Now, another question, if, uh, we have members who are not here on, in February, is there enough, if they choose to abstain, is there enough of a quorum to get the votes?
I think we need four.
You get four?
All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead and, and ask if there is, uh, is anyone prepared for a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll go ahead and approve the amendments, the minutes, not amendment, but the minutes as written.
For February twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it, but I don't think we are gonna have a quorum here, are we?
So, if our, our new members, they are perfectly, um, allowed to go ahead and vote on this, they do not have to abstain. Uh, so we can go ahead and take a, take the vote. Wanna go ahead and?
Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't hear that someone seconded, I was waiting for the second, I apologize.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Stevens?
Approved.
Uh, Commissioner Gribble?
Yes.
Commissioner Bentley? Uh, Commissioner Salak? Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Okay, so.
All right, the minutes are approved.
That was for February twenty-fourth for the work session. And now the next one is February twenty-fourth, the regular sec, uh, session, if anyone is, uh, ready to make a motion.
Also make the motion that we approve these minutes as written.
Seconded.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Bentley?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved, as written.
All right, and lastly, we have the minutes from May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the work session. Is there a motion to approve?
Go ahead and approve, request for approval of these minutes as written.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Bentley?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved as written.
All right, next up, we have an audience for visitors, if anyone would like to address the planning commission. As I see none, I'm going to close that audience for visitors. Next up is a public hearing, uh, to discuss, uh, or to go over the amendments to appendix C, site plans of the City of PCOS and Code of Ordinances. Now, we had a work session immediately prior to this, we also discussed this, uh, in a work session for the May sixteenth meeting. But Wally, do you have anything else that you would like to add during our regular session?
I don't know that I have anything to add, Madam Chairwoman, except just to say that I, uh, attempted to make this a little easier with the site plans by putting in my own planning notes in purple. At which, uh, hopefully explained a lot of the changes that we're making. Most of them, as I said last meeting, have to do with making them more clear, uh, making sure we're in a, uh, in accord with state code. And, uh, lighting is really the only new section that we've introduced.
There any other discussion from the planning commission? Questions, comments?
I have a, I just wanted to get a clarification. Uh, what we're doing here is if someone were to add in addition to their house, they have to get the site approvals and everything else. And that's what it's really about, right, and it's the fees for that are in here and so forth.
Site plans are generally going to apply to commercial buildings and residential buildings requiring site plans such as apartments, multifamily, those things. Uh, uh, simple, single-family residents would not go through this process.
They're not required, obvious question that I had was, were residences required, residential, single-family required to have a site plan now to do an addition?
No, typically what they'll do is they'll have a plan for the building official, uh, to look at. So, in, in that way, there's a plan, but there's not.
But it's not a formal site plan?
Right, exactly.
And is that somewhere stated in all of this, that, that that is not a requirement?
Yes, it is.
Where, one? One oh-three C.
Four oh-four.
They plan shall not be required if the following conditions exist.
There's a lot of, uh, scratch out there.
It says where a development plan has been submitted and approved in accordance. What, what, what does that mean, where a development, I think of a development plan as being a subdivision or some sort of project as opposed to a single-family home?
So, they're not requiring a site plan if it's construction larger or alteration of single-family dwelling, two-family dwellings, or accessory dwellings, two-family dwellings, sheds, garages, things like that. Or two-family dwellings, or subdivisions where a development plan has, has been submitted and approved in accordance with existing subdivision.
Okay, or, okay, or is the key, okay.
Uh, something that I think can be added to the language in section one, uh, dash oh-seven, subsection I, number three. Would be the foot candle values shall be point five foot candles or less as measured vertically, we were talking about that. Uh, an official motion, but just a discussion.
I haven't seen the reason why we can't, can't do that.
Is that a common practice?
I saw about fifty-fifty would have a horizontal and a vertical, um, and then others where it was just the point five. But for me, being the more conservative, having it the vertical.
I think vertically makes a lot of sense, I mean, when you think about it. If, if you, if you're measuring, unlike you, it seems like vertically, you, you're gonna get a more exact reading.
You'd get it more horizontally, the light is being, again, I, I don't know, but if the light is being cast down as opposed to. To me, just a, 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 a horizontal would give a better, uh, reading as to the dispersment of the light, maybe that's not the purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't intend, intuitively, it does seem that way, um.
It's not.
It's not, at least, at least from, when I was measuring and then from reading the literature, it was a difference.
Yeah, I think there's a difference, I mean, it's, it's pretty minor, but there is a difference there, yeah.
I wanna go back to the, uh, single family, because if I look at, uh, one dash oh-three B. It, it basically says, uh, down in one, uh, the, the proposal is for the construction larger of operation of single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, buildings or single-family dwellings or two buildings. Single-family dwellings are in there and they're talking about site plans.
The proposal is for the.
Not required if the following conditions exist.
Right.
Section C, that last.
Oh, see, there's so many strikeouts.
I know.
And red strikeouts is language you see that been moved or deleted.
This one, I could see with the color better.
Yeah, you're, you're not in the colored one, if you look in that one, it's each.
But now I understand where, where it's coming from, yeah, this right here is the key thing.
Two of twenty-two, you'll.
I have a question on, um, Andrew, it was one dash oh-seven. I. Two-three, so is there, and I may have completely missed, is there a requirement of where this, the reading has to be taken? Because there's a difference of if I'm one foot away from where the light itself is, or if I'm five feet back, so is there guidelines of where?
We would generally take it in an area of the property line, because that's a spillover light, we're talking about going from one property to the next.
Okay, okay.
But is there a requirement that you don't have a certain amount of spillover, or is that something that?
You would not be allowed to have more than point five foot candle spillover.
And who determines that, who will?
Well, if we got a complaint, I would go out there with the light meter and see what the readings were at the property line.
So, the, the developer would know in advance, I mean, I would hate to see them put all these lights in and then you go out and you say, well, they exceed the spillover and then they've been to that expense. So, it seems to me there should be some way to measure. What the spillover will be at some point.
Well, we, we can do that as part of, you know, COs, but really, when they prepare a light plan, they've spent a lot of money and a lot of lighting technicians' money in order to come up with that foot candle map. And if they're saying that they're not gonna spill over, over point five, you know, I'm going to take that. And, but if we do receive complaints, just like any other complaint in the zoning ordinance, we would be, uh, or site plan ordinance, whatever it may be. You know, we'd go out there and verify that everything was as it should be.
So, this is really a, a non-issue because they follow the experts in the planning, unless it's an abnormality and an issue, then we investigate. So, really, industry standard is to do that point five and they know that going into it.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I had a thought and I lost it there for a minute, but, uh, anyway, I'll get back to it, I'm sure.
While you're thinking that, could you clarify, you have, I think, in a, just a, a note in here, um, for our sake, on page eight and nine of twenty-two, the bottom of page eight.
Yes.
Carrying on to page nine.
Yes.
And it was saying, hey, council, city council may want the above stated here, but they did not.
They didn't, they did not.
Could you clarify that statement?
Well, when I presented the planning and development ordinances to city council, uh, this was a note that, uh, we had last year. Basically saying that our lighting plan would include photometric measurement and the foot candles. What I was basically trying to demonstrate is that this is not really a new idea, this is something that we've talked about before. Um, just, just trying to give you a little bit of extra information, that, that's really all that was. And, and the council chose to, uh, address it at a later time.
So, the legacy will be built, will they have, will they meet these guidelines or no?
Well, what they've submitted in their site plan shows that they meet these guidelines.
Okay.
Now, I will say this about legacy, because they came in.
After.
You know, they're already in.
Right.
And they are, to a certain extent, grandfathered.
Right, right.
Certainly from the PUD ordinance amendments we did last.
How about the other area, I can't think of the name of it?
About Darden, maybe?
Legacy, I mean, not legacy.
Fountains?
The fountains, yeah, what, would that be?
Well, if he.
Have we seen any kind of lighting plan in there?
If it gets around the building something, yes, we will require a lighting plan, yes.
Has anything moved on the, in that area over there by chance?
Uh, that I'm aware of, I know he's used the property as a lay-down yard.
As a what?
As a lay-down yard. For the V dot project, Old Wood Creek Road.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about, uh, about the, uh, site plan ordinance?
Uh, one, one question, still on the, still on the lighting thing, uh, so this is the first. And, uh, the planning note on page nine.
Okay.
Keep in mind that this will be the first lighting regulation the city has had, therefore, I have veered away from strict requirements, particularly foot candle wise. Again, the balance between light pollution and public safety is an important point to keep in mind. Staff believes the point five foot candle value is sufficient to address, address both concerns. So, does that mean there's more coming, or is this?
No, that just means that we think that these regulations are gonna be, are, are adequate.
Old for.
Yes, yes.
It just kind of implies that, hey, we're starting in, we wanted to.
Oh, I, I, I get you, I get your meaning.
In a year, we'll review it and say, we wanna go to one instead of point five.
I get your meaning, I think we'll stay at point five.
Ten-four.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Are any other questions or clarifications prior?
Well, on page ten of twenty-two.
Okay.
Reckon is the lighting in parking lots shall be directed so as not to produce objectionable glare. No lighting fixtures shall exceed a height of thirty feet, so do we know that that will not, that thirty feet and below will not, uh, produce objectionable glare? Is that the purpose of the thirty feet and elimination of that language?
That will be demonstrated on the photometric map, regardless of how high it is. Now, now, the one I showed you tonight, they're not doing lights higher than fourteen feet, but thirty feet is our current standard, I, I did not change that.
I just, I mean, you eliminated that language, so I didn't know, once you eliminate objectionable glare on adjacent property or streets.
What page are you looking at?
I'm on page ten of twenty-two, number four.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Uh, yeah, basically what I did with that sentence right there is that, uh, previously we said the lighting in parking lots shall be directed so as not to produce objectionable glare on adjacent property or streets. But there was no real figure given to it, so what I did is I just said in accord with section one oh-seven I, which does have a foot candle value. That's really, that's really all I did there. No lighting fixtures shall exceed a height of thirty feet, I, I capitalized the N in no, but other than that, I kept the language.
Essentially, it specifies that rather than giving it an arbitrary objectionable glare.
I just said no.
Goes back to the point five foot candle.
Okay, I got you, referring back to the one oh-seven, you're on the.
Ever been any talk about a noise survey? We do that, do that on the?
We actually have a noise.
We have a noise ordinance.
Okay, so it's.
It's in a part of the city code.
City code, got it.
Environment, if you go to Munich.
Chapter thirty-four, I think.
I can actually email to you.
Building would have to adhere, do you do a noise survey? The thing, why, how come, why do we go in detail on this main site plan for, like, lighting? And like, you can have measurements.
Mm-hmm.
And why don't you go to the lighting ordinance or something like that?
Well, it's not, lighting is not specified elsewhere in the city code, that's when I, I went, uh, heavy on the lighting language, as you say.
Gotcha, so the, so like a noise.
If you were to look at our noise. If you were to look at our noise ordinance or our other environmental ordinance, you'd see this style of language.
Wouldn't there be a section in here that says, noise ordinance for a site plan, see? Noise ordinance, up to, up to?
Well, I mean, the site plan is something that community development and zoning enforces. We don't necessarily enforce the noise ordinance, that's more of a place matter. That's why it's in a separate section of the code. I get, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
I got a building, somebody builds a building here, take the car wash, for example, you know, as, hoping that, there's nothing there that, unless you have research that says, I've gotta stay within this noise, after the building is construct, you know?
We have to stay within certain thresholds, and we have to, within certain hours a day. And if there is a violation, that may be pursued by the police.
I was just-
Because they have the, uh, equipment necessary to-
Not, not questioning the enforcement, just when person see it written, that's all.
And Wally, sorry, it, am I correct in stating that the site plan, those are things that can be shown on a map, that can be documented, in, in a map format, whereas noise isn't necessarily an artifact of a spatial construct like a map, but a lighting plan would be?
Lighting plan would be, noise is difficult. I know, uh, when I'm, Fall Creek County, we, uh, we had a guy who had a rifle range, we had to go down there and take noise measurements, and that was not easy, let me tell you. First of all, we had to hide in the woods because the guy was, wasn't around, so, uh, you know, which raises all another issue of trespass. But anyway, uh, as far as I could tell, we still don't know the guy's property, but anyway. Yeah, these are the things you get into.
Understand, I understand.
15 of 22, it says not less than 15 prints, is that the norm? I mean, this just seems so excessive to me, 15 prints of a preliminary subdivision, is that what we require now?
Yeah, that's what we require, although, if you look at this language carefully, you'll see that a preliminary site plan is not always required. For less than 50 lots, it's actually not required, although it's offered, it has to be offered.
I guess why I'm asking is, do we have 15 people that would review the site plan in, within the city, that's a reason you can?
Probably so, um, engineering wants two copies, public work wants two copies, we typically keep two copies, so you're up six there. And you haven't even really sort of talked about some of the other agencies that look at-
No, it just seemed excessive to me.
Might need a copy for your records, too.
I have to keep a copy for my ENS inspections, especially after a similar occurrence. All of my inspections have to go off of the approved plan. Engineering has to keep in a, a copy of approved plans based on the storm management facilities, so we can easily achieve 15 copies.
Well, I'm talking about a preliminary here, not, not a final site plan, I'm talking about this preliminary that not less than 15 prints of the preliminary plan. Why would you need 15, 15 prints of a, of a preliminary, that's what I was trying to understand.
It gets eaten up, all I can tell you is that it gets eaten up. Same people that get a final plan are gonna get a preliminary.
And so, what, does everyone comment, and then they submit their comments on the preliminary to the zoning administrat, or to?
To the developer, or, you know?
No, I mean, the developer gets one statement of, or a list, I, if you will, of every comment that you make. What I'm asking is, if, if it goes out to 15 different people, and there are 15 different comments, who compiles those comments to, and reviews them, and before the list is provided to the developer?
We compile them in community development.
Your department compiles them, okay.
Anything, any other comments on the scope of the changes?
I'm still trying to get myself through them.
Hey, go ahead.
One more question, sorry. Uh, I, I saw something referencing state code, does the state code, are they trying to move away from providing a full site plan at the time of submission, is that what I'm hearing?
I think state code is moving away from requirements for preliminary plans and preliminary plaits, that type of thing. Uh, the idea is to streamline requests to the, to the extent that that is possible.
Is it streamlined? Because I think that is a, an issue, not only in this, maybe in this locality, but numerous localities, is streamlining this process. And I just wondered, is it really streamlined, or is it just that cumbersome?
Well, a lot of counties and a lot of jurisdictions will, uh, have special processes that they come up with for, uh, business plans, development plans. You know, whether it's streamlined or follow analysis, I don't know, I'd like to think, when we were in Fall Creek County and did it, we actually helped streamline a few things. But, uh, you know, one of, one of the things about Pecoson is that, uh, I think we do a pretty good job of streamlining things here, because we're small, we kinda use a personal touch where we can, and, uh, you know, we don't ignore our codes. But, you know, I think the way that we explain them i- is, is, I mean, I think we do a good job of that, anyway.
Could you tell me, just generally speaking, if someone were to come in with a preliminary today? How long would it take?
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we're kinda staying in the scope of the changes.
I know, and I'm probably going off a wee bit, but I, it all goes back to this 15 copies, I'm just trying to understand, what kind of timeline do we have for site plans?
Well, state code gives us guidelines on how long we have for site plans, the first iteration, I believe, in any crook, if I'm wrong, I believe, 90 days.
90 days, okay.
And, uh, and then after that, we try to, we, we always try to beat those deadlines, and, and I'm proud to say we typically do.
Okay.
Uh, but that's what state code allows us. And that's on the first review, and typically after that, you know, they're well underway towards addressing comments. They may not address them quite, quite sufficiently, but they're on their way, anyway. And we try to turn those around within 30 days, although I think we have a little bit longer, but we try to-
I just didn't know, I mean, it, I guess this follows the state code, it follows the norm, if you will, of what most localities require, there's nothing that's really, um-
In fact, if we don't follow the state code, they can, they can say, well, by now reviewing the plan, automatically prove it.
Right, oh.
So, so there are, there are, uh, there are consequences.
Right, right, okay.
If, if we don't do what we're supposed to.
Just a, one final thing, and, uh, where it says, the, uh, when the zoning administrator determines that the final site plan complies in all respects, he shall date the plan and sign it in the space provided. Review and approval by the zoning manager shall be subject to the conditions, of course, of the Code of Virginia. But it happened there before the city council, and I think what you're, what we're saying there is that the city manager, whoever it is, the zoning manager, is the one that's gonna approve it, and doesn't have to go before the city council.
In this case, it'd be Randy Wheeler, yes. I've been in that position before, but, uh, so I, I can kinda feel Randy's, Randy's pain on that, so, uh, but, uh, but he's not gonna sign anything till it's right, I won't let him.
We did a great job of delineating so we could see what's what in here.
Good, thanks.
Definitely.
I'm glad it helped.
I have no further questions.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go on, stick my neck out, and say I recommend that we approve the site plans as written.
Yes, okay, second, uh, discussion, um, I would, I know that a motion has been made, I would like to see the, under the, that subsection I dash 3B, that as measured vertically on the foot candle values.
L.B., is that, shall be conveyed to the city council, yes.
That, that's my only discussion as far as, as far as that motion goes. So, whatever your thoughts are on that. And I don't know, um, if you concur with that, if we need to have, take that off, or can we amend the current motion?
You would have to amend?
Well, I think we need to amend the motion to, to include that, yeah.
And would you restate, and where are you at again? What, uh, section?
I am on section 1 dash 07, and, uh, it's subsection I.
Lighting of the United-
Yes, a lighting plan, and then 3, part B. And the foot candle value shall be .5 foot candles or less as measured vertically where the site adjoins residentially zone properties.
Alright, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to walk me through that one more time.
Yes, 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 you bet, uh, section 107.
Page.